Good morning.
Good morning.
It's now about 9:02 a.m. on Thursday, April 2nd, 2020. We're here this morning for a special call meeting of the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Adam McCook if he can say our prayer for us and our pledge. If everyone please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Please be with us as we make, as our board makes decisions in this meeting today to protect citizens of Swanee County. Please be with all of our first responders, healthcare workers, military, as they carry out their day-to-day duties in this tragic time. Please bless each one of us, keep us healthy, please be with the sick, keep them, keep them in your comforting arms and all, and be with us as we go through our week and keep us safe. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you that are with us today here and also ones that are viewing from their homes, I'd just like to say you see a little difference this morning. We got our social distancing orders in place and we got three commissioners up top and two down, two down on the bottom, and so we're going to proceed like that. Our first item of business this morning is consent agenda. Have items one through four. Do I have any questions or comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Jim.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving right along, I got a lot, Mr. Kerry Waldron, to come up and give us a brief update. I know he's very busy and has another meeting to get to, so we'll get him in and out.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity. Again, I'd like to start off by thanking our staff at the Florida Department of Health. As you can imagine, our activity has increased significantly and staff's working long hours, but they're doing a fantastic job of meeting the needs of our community. I would like to remind folks to remain calm. This is a time for calmness, but also be cautious and use common sense as we move forward in our deliberations in our daily living. Just received this morning around eight o'clock, the most current data from the state. There's a total of 8,012 cases, confirmed cases in the state of Florida. We have 106 deaths in the state of Florida. The leading age bracket for the confirmed cases are between the ages of 45 to 64 years old, which make up 35%. The second leading number of cases in the leading age bracket is between 25 years of age and 44 years of age. We still see very few cases in the age bracket of zero to four years, with only 29 confirmed cases in the state of Florida. And in the age bracket of five to 14 years, there's only 47 cases. So that's still a great indication that our younger folks are resilient and we pray that they do not contract this, this virus. We are seeing a total of 86 cases in assisted, or excuse me, in long-term care facilities. Broward County leads that number with 23 cases in their facilities. In Swanee County, we have one case, and I'll be announcing a second case this morning. We continue to see men, 22% of them are the confirmed cases, with females 46%. Dade County continues to lead the state with a number of cases with 2,410. Broward County, 1,314. Palm Beach County, 608. Orange County, 465. Hillsborough, 361. Duval, 264 cases. This morning, I will be announcing very shortly a seventh case in Swanee County. It is a 60-year-old female that is currently hospitalized, and it is connected to an existing case. So I'll be sending that press release out mid-morning. To our neighboring counties, Columbia County has a total of three confirmed cases, and Madison County has a total of two confirmed cases. Hamilton and Lafayette, so far, knock on wood, have zero cases. To date, we have tested 85 people that's come through the Health Department and through other providers. If folks are tested at their provider, we may or may not know that they have been screened or sampled if the provider does not notify us. But however, once the results of the test populate into the state's database, we will capture that data and we've got 10 screenings that are currently, or samples, that are currently awaiting test results. If, if it's someone that qualifies under the criteria to be tested, the priority criteria, that goes to a state lab, and that takes between 24 to 48 hours to get the results back. If it's a non-priority case, it goes to a commercial lab, which is Quest or LabCorp, and we're seeing that it takes between six to seven days for the results to come back. Out of our seven cases, six cases are connected. We do know where the contacts are, and we are working with those individuals to make sure that they're isolated and they're quarantined and that they're following all the precautions that they need to take. As I spoke, in two of the cases are hospitalized, and they will remain hospitalized before they can return to a facility. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are those folks hospitalized here in Swanee?
One is, one is not. One is hospitalized out of county.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Waldron from the board?
Mr. Chairman, you said that there were one, six are confirmed and one that you're awaiting, or there were seven?
There are seven cases. I will be announcing number seven this morning with the press release. But I wanted, because it's in our database, I wanted to go ahead and make you aware of it. It will just expedite me notifying you, because it will come out around 11 o'clock when the state issues their update. State issues an update at around 11 a.m. and then again around 6 p.m. And what we do, we are given the data a few hours prior to that so that we can look through the data to make sure that it's accurate at our county level. If there are any changes that need to be made, then we can do so. We're very fortunate at this point that we have no deaths in our county. I would encourage everyone, especially commissioners, that we're dealing with a very sensitive subject and that I implore that we handle this with utmost care as possible, be mindful of HIPAA, be mindful of the privacy rights of those that are being screened and those that may have tested positive, and for the facilities that they work in. We do not want to create panic at all in our community. This virus will run its course. There has been a high recovery rate. Those that we see that are passing away to death are, generally have other morbidity issues that are underlying medical issues, and they're generally have been in the elderly population. So I just ask that we treat this with very respectful and very delicate as we move forward because we don't want to scare the fool out of everybody. We want to make sure, maintain calmness because, you know, this, you're going to be isolated, you will be home, you can overcome this by taking the precautions that have been implemented by the governor, by the state surgeon general, and here at the local level. Again, common sense has to prevail. If you're sick, please stay home. If you do not have to go anywhere, don't go. Only make necessary trips. If you have to go to the grocery store, if you have to go to the gas station, if you have to go to your pharmacy, just be very mindful when you're traveling, where you're traveling, and how you're traveling. Be careful of who you're around. Distance yourself. I appreciate everyone here today practicing the social distancing and being mindful of that. Wash your hands consistently and frequently for 20 seconds. When you sneeze, cover your mouth, cover your nose, discard of the tissue if you're using it. If you have hand sanitizer, keep a bottle in your pocket. So things that we can do to help mitigate this.
Thank you, Mr. Waldron. We appreciate the update this morning.
I've got one question for you.
Yes, sir.
We spoke yesterday, and I'm still getting a lot of phone calls, and maybe y'all are too, about testing and why some people aren't. Can you just go into that one more time, just for those watching at home, those here, and make sure that everybody's on the same page, responding to answers that phone calls we get, or why we're not testing everyone?
Sure. As I have said, this is not an everyone and all get tested or get screened. What we do is, we do not test here. The test is done at the state lab. What we do is collect a sample. If you are symptomatic, and those that are priority cases, or those individuals that are hospitalized, and also healthcare facility workers that have symptoms, symptoms being fever, coughing, having respiratory issues, breathing issues, and, and folks that have underlying medical issues, diabetes, cancer treatment, COPD, heart issues, patients that are in long-term care facilities, that is a priority of the governor and of the state surgeon general. If someone is in a long-term care facility with symptoms, they are a candidate for screening or for sampling. Patients at the age of 65 years or older with symptoms, they are a candidate. Also, first responders with symptoms, they are a candidate, excuse me, a first responder with symptoms are a candidate for testing. If you are sick, see your primary care provider because we still have flu going around in our community, and we also have severe allergies in our community. So a lot of times, folks will have symptoms and they think that it's COVID-related when it very well could be something else. So if you have a primary care provider, please reach out to them. Do not show up at the ER, do not show up at the Health Department, do not show up to your healthcare provider if you feel like you have COVID symptoms. Please call first and be screened by someone at that agency. We are trying to limit the amount of exposure by you just traveling and showing up, so please call before you travel anywhere to a hospital, to a physician's office, or to the Health Department. I'd answer your question.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And real quick, Mr. Chairman, if you will, just for the public knowledge, Mr. Waldron, would you let them know what you guys are doing at the Department of Health, what services you are conducting? I think there's some misconception there as well.
We are, we are open. We have core services that we are providing, which includes family practice, which includes immunizations. It's still time to get a flu shot, you can. We are still in an epidemic with Hep A. Fortunately for our community, we do not have a high number of Hep A cases, but we're still doing investigations and trying to combat hepatitis A in our community. We still provide vital statistics. We are working with our nursing homes who need death certificates. They can actually fax in their request form, and we now have credit card capability so we can take payment via credit card. So that allows the funeral homes not to have to come to the Health Department to provide those services. We're still providing birth certificates. We have modified our dental clinic, which is for kids zero to 20 who are Medicaid eligible. We are only seeing emergent cases, that is, if you have swelling, inflammation, or pain, then we are seeing those in Swanee County on Wednesday mornings and in Lafayette County on Wednesday afternoons. We are still providing a full range of environmental health services, which includes septic tank inspections, food safety inspections, nuisance complaints, animal bites, because those are all considered core activities as established by state statute. We do have a primary focus on COVID-19 with our nursing staff. We are quite, quite busy, but we go through a screening process. And if you do not meet the criteria, the priority one and two criteria, we are referring you to your medical provider. And so we do have a protocol in place that if we, if you are one of those individuals that are, that meet eligibility, we will bring you to a certain spot at the Health Department to where we can come outside. You can stay in your car. We take all the information, as much as we can possibly get upfront over the telephone, so that when you show up, we're spending about maybe three to four minutes with you. And then we can take the swab, and then we can package that and ship that out to the state lab in Jacksonville. If we are, if you are an individual that is eligible, that's been determined by our nursing staff that you are eligible, we don't want you to all come at one time. We're trying to establish it where we give you a time that you can come so that we can space that out and not create a gridlock at the Health Department. But we are being very mindful and respectful of those individuals. We're maintaining their privacy as, as much as possible. We're also trying to protect the safety of our workers, and we have found that doing the swabbing while they're in the vehicle is very safe for not only the individual, but also for our staff.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Waldron, I hate to keep bothering you with all these questions, but you did say call before you come.
Yes.
What number for the ones, that individuals that don't know what number, would they call?
386-362-2708 is our main line to the, to the Health Department.
Okay.
And we have staff available there to, that are answering telephones.
I'm quite sure that there's some individuals that probably feel have some discomfort after hours like five, six, seven, eight, nine, would they, could they call 911?
If they are in immediate distress and having severe medical issues, they need to call 911 and alert them. And dispatch will alert EMS about what precautions need to be taken. And I know I've been, I probably talked to Eddie more than his wife does right now, and they will take precautions. They will, if it's necessary, they will suit up. If we get a call to a nursing home facility, they are screening, what are the symptoms? And if it's a concern that it may be COVID-related, they are putting on the appropriate PPE to respond. As far as, we do have after-hours, if anyone calls the Health Department after hours, it will go to an on-call messaging service. And what we're seeing, unless it's a dire medical emergency, most people can be seen Monday through Friday, eight to five. There's not a need at this point to open any additional hours because if you're sick, there is no cure. You're going to ask to be, you're going to be asked to stay at home and monitor your And again, that number's 386-362-2708.
Thank you so much, Mr. Waldron.
Thank you. And call me at any time. And again, just a reminder, we're working two counties, my staff, and so far in Lafayette County, there are zero cases. So a lot of my time and attention has been here in Swanee County. But if I'm available, I'll be more than happy to come and give you an update.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Moving forward tomorrow, ask Mr. Harris, got a few things I'd like to discuss.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I met with our library staff yesterday and told them that they didn't need to come in until further notice. I'm going to ask that the commission by motion agree to allow me to pay them their full wages for at least a week to give me some time to explore and see what federal and the state government is going to do for these small rural communities with limited financial resources. I've had conversations as well with the clerk of the court. Some of you may have spoken to the clerk. We do have concerns with the impacts to state revenue going forward into, particularly into our next budget cycle. So we're looking at everything that we can right now to try to curb expense. Lot of big-ticket items that were items that we put into the budget, we're probably going to hold off on and just hold on to that revenue to see if we need to use that next year for some other purpose. So those are things that we're looking at at the staff level right now. I know the clerk is looking at those things as well. But for now, my request would be that you agree to allow us to go ahead and pay 100% of the wages for those library employees. And sometime next week, I'll have more information on what the federal and the state government may be doing to help supplement these small rural communities on, in that regard.
Thank you, sir. Have any comments on that? I mean, I would like to say I'm in favor of those folks being paid, at least to be able to research it and see, as he's commented, what the future holds and what our plans are and...
Mr. Chairman, one question. Just clarification, is that paying next week's or the remainder of this week?
It'll, it'll take care of the rest of the current week and next week, to the end of a full week.
Okay.
And by then, I should have information that I can share with you.
Mr. Larry, you got a question or comment? Will you come to the microphone, please?
If I was going to let you go ahead and do your part, and I had a comment afterwards to actually make your decision, it's not going to affect your decision.
Okay.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
Approved by Commissioner Gamble. I have a second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Harris?
I'll have something else to share with you in a moment, but let's go ahead and, no, go ahead.
Larry Sessions, 4377, 72nd Street, Live Vote. I'm probably a little bit farther ahead of the county than y'all are with the layoff and the other situations, and I'm coming to ask for help. If you can get in touch with the governor's office or other entities, I've been trying for almost a week now. My issue is, I am laying people off at this point, and I'm getting to the point where I'm laying off senior personnel who are actually in the drop. So a layoff where they, they take the unemployment, I need specific information from the FRS that if they're laid off and they're drawing unemployment, will their drop continue, or do I need to pay into drop for them while they're laid off? I've already guaranteed I'll pay their, their insurance. So if I need to pay into the drop, I also will, but that's a big question that I, I talked to Representative Brandon's office yesterday. They, they couldn't really tell me anything. I got ahold of somebody from Career Source, who they couldn't give me an answer. But I'm at a point of doing mandatory layoffs, and some of these people are in the drop. And I think actually some of your library people are actually in the drop too, so it may be something that will help you out. And if you can find it out quicker than me, I'd appreciate it because we've gone down from 31 employees to, I'm working four drivers and five people in the staff and two mechanics right now. Everybody else I've told to go to unemployment and sign up. I'm still paying them their PTO while they're off waiting for the government to kick in. But the way it's going, me paying 100% payroll every two weeks, not going to look good by the end of April. So I'm trying to figure out any way I can to lower the payroll. But right now, my biggest question is, the people in the drop, should they be furloughed, laid off? But is there, is there a plan by the state to allow this to pass for a period of time to where they'll still get their retirement and, you know, they won't have an interruption in their drop?
Yeah, I'm going to speculate that probably the best they're going to be able to do right now is just waive the other rules and regulations that otherwise exist.
That's what they need to do.
But I'll call...
I need to know that for a fact because it's got people's retirement.
Yeah, I'll see what I can find out for you. Commissioners, I, I called and spoke to a senator over the weekend and a representative over the weekend. I don't mind telling you, I had a pretty heated conversation. I was disgusted that the governor had not already done some things that I, this, very executive order. Because I recognize that local elected officials didn't want to make the tough decision and run the risk of offending businesses right before the election. So I was aggravated by the fact that, because we know this is a statewide pandemic, that the state had not already done something more substantive to put a stop to this. I called these two particular people because I felt that they had the ability to get to the governor's office, and I don't know if they did or not. But I'm thankful that this executive order finally came out because I think it's going to go a long way in helping us flatten this curve. But I'll probably reach out to them again and just talk to them about this FRS issue. I heard about this, Larry, yesterday, and I recognize the problems that that poses and the, certainly, these employees don't need the stress associated with the uncertainty on this issue. But I'll reach out to those same two again and see if we can get some type of response. The only executive order I've seen that had anything to do with FRS was that of speaking to the issue of the FRS employees in Tallahassee. But I'll, I'll make those calls today and see if we can get some information on that as well.
Larry, just so you know, I did reach out to Brandon's office in Bradley's as well. I haven't heard back either, trying to find out an answer for you.
I talked to somebody from Brandon's office. It was more for fact-finding, thing for him understanding what I was thinking, so he's going to get back to me hopefully today, but I haven't heard anything else from anybody else. But my, you know, my concern is the DOT, FDOT, and the TD Commission don't know what to do yet. I've been pushing them about funding, and they're telling me they're going to accomplish called Friday to try to figure it out. But the bottom line is, if I bill them for 20% of what I'm doing, but I'm still spending 100% of my payroll, it's only going to be a matter of time that we run out of money.
Yeah.
Ms. Betty, did you have a question or comment? If you do, please come up with the microphone. Just ask you to come to the front because the, for people at home watching, it doesn't pick it up.
Sure, no problem. Thank you for allowing me to come up. I just have a couple of comments and then probably a question. I want to thank Mr. Harris for coming over and talking to the staff yesterday because I know that some of my staff members was very concerned and very afraid with regards to what's going on. I do need to let you know that in our environment, we practice, we practice safe measures. And yesterday, when I made the phone calls to all of my other counties, the staff wanted me to convey to you that we do understand the decision that had to be made, but the majority of them, I would say 93% of them, felt that they were doing the right thing, assured them that they were. And they wanted you to know that, that other 2% or 3% did not represent what everyone else was saying. I feel that I need to let you know. I can go into detail in terms of what we did otherwise because I know curbside, which we immediately stopped after we received word. But that process also was one that we took precaution with. Basically, what happened with that was that if someone wanted to check out a book, they had to call in at least 30 minutes before they anticipated making a trip up to the library to pick it up out of a cart that was sanitized, put outside. We also have library bags that's sanitized. The material was put in the bag, and they had to show up 15 minutes after the staff put it out. The staff would go out 10 minutes afterwards to bring the cart in. So I just needed you to understand basically what the process was. It wasn't that we were being haphazard about what we did, and we discussed this with all of our staff, and I was really surprised to learn that some of them expressed that they were very uncomfortable with it, but did not give me that information prior to me getting it otherwise. So I just wanted to let you know that. Now, moving on, I do have one county's library staff that factors into their county's emergency response plan, and that is Madison County. I received a call when you all had to establish your plans for the state from Madison County, asking if the library could serve as an emergency response should the need arise. And I did let them know that at that point, library staff was in the building and that they would be able to participate via telephone because what would happen is they would start rolling over, phone calls to them with scripts regarding the information that they needed to, you know, to get to the citizens of that county. So I have not talked, I've made a phone call, and I'm expecting a response from the commissioners and coordinators in that county. But depending on what they give me, because they are a part of that response team, I need to communicate that with Mr. Harris and you guys, just to kind of let you know what they're feeding me and what they're requesting. So I just wanted to say that, and I do have a couple of staff members that's just taking care of our invoices, our payroll, those kinds of things. And I do have about seven members that's in the drop program, just to kind of let you know. But thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your update.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, do you have something, anything else?
I have two, two things. One thing that I want to share with you just as, for discussion, but I would ask that we invite the sheriff to come up and talk to us about how he's going to implement, if he's thinking he's going to have any difficulties in this executive order and, and its impacts to the local community. the local community. I told him yesterday he could blame it all on me. I know he doesn't, he finds this as distasteful as everyone does, to be quite frank with you. And it's understandable.
Well, like I said, we had that meeting there at the EOC yesterday and we was all trying to figure out, you know, which it doesn't, you know, it states in these orders, the last order about, you know, what is essential, but it doesn't say what's not essential. So and we had some several discussions about, you know, which one was and which one wasn't, you know? And so here again, that's what they're making, I guess making the county officials here kind of make a decision about what they want closed and what they want... Well, which some of it is stated in what can be open, and there's quite a few that can be opened. And there's just very few that we've discussed that has to be closed. And I guess that's the point where you all have to make a decision there of which one that you think is non-essential.
Mr. Chairman, I know this is gonna be a difficult decision, and I think that some of these cases are gonna be pretty obvious because of the essential businesses being listed. But I don't mind telling you that if the sheriff wants to appoint someone, I don't mind volunteering to help. We'll sit down and see if we can't put a list together of those that we believe are non-essential, based on the criteria that we have and what the state has provided. When I saw this approach, in fact, I'd had conversations with county attorney about this a week ago, when we were looking at what some other locations had already done. And when I first saw how they approached this issue by stating, well, let's just try to identify essential services, essential activities, essential businesses, I felt like at the time that it was an attempt to not offend anyone by listing the businesses that are non-essential.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But the reality is, when you're in this type of situation, some people are going to be offended regardless of your best efforts to not offend them. And there comes a time where you just have to step up and do what's right. I could argue and debate all of the issues associated with government overreach probably better than most. But I'm gonna tell you right now, it's time to be a leader and do what needs to be done and try to prevent the spread of this virus. I'm thrilled that we don't have a death in Swanee County. I'd be even more thrilled if, when this thing's over, we can look back and say we didn't have a death in Swanee County. I know that some of the measures that we take in the midst of a pandemic seem alarmist. But later, we don't want to look back and say that they were inadequate. So it's time to just do what needs to be done. I'll volunteer if you want to appoint someone. And I know it can be difficult. Quite frankly, we sat and had a conversation, a brief conversation yesterday and realized that the more we talked and sat there brainstorming, the more businesses we came up with that maybe are non-essential, that don't fit this criteria. So I'm not saying it's easy. Some of them are easier than others. But I'll volunteer to serve with anybody if you want to appoint someone, maybe the city might want to appoint someone.
Yes, I think that's a very good idea because, you know, after we left the EOC, you know, and driving back through town, I've seen some, you know, some different business, you know, that we didn't talk about, you know? So Chief Davis is here, so, you know, between, I know we need to get him involved since there's a lot of business in the city, you know?
Right.
So I think that's probably the best idea, sit down and just kind of brainstorm this and just see, you know, what we can come up with to, you know, help, you know, to help to, don't spread the virus by any means, but then keep the ones that are essential, keep them open also.
Right. I think another issue that we need to discuss briefly is, and we'll work on that, and I'll volunteer and we'll just go ahead even today and try to get that started.
Okay.
But I think in addition to that, one thing that we need to consider is that of trying to enforce these distance separation recommendations that have been out now for at least a couple of weeks, two or three weeks, I guess, that we all recognize in lots of our commercial retail businesses, they're not being enforced. Many cases not even being encouraged. You can go into a lot of stores and they've got tape on the floor and squares on the floor and, you know, there, maybe someone's recommending that you try to maintain the distancing, but there are too many cases today where that simply isn't occurring. I spoke to the tax collector, I think it was maybe Monday, and she'd had a problem that she recognized over there where they had people trying to get into the tag office, lining up outside of the door like schoolchildren with ten to twelve inches between them. And she'd walk out and encourage them to maintain that separation that everyone's heard about. And she said they wouldn't budge, just stood in those lines, nearly touching each other. This is a problem. When, you know, we talked about common sense and the reality is, common sense just isn't common. So unfortunately, you have government having to step in and try to be the policeman of the lack of common sense that's out there. And it is unfortunate. But even in our businesses that are easily identified as essential services, we're gonna have to try to figure out if we can get in there and help encourage. And it might mean sending an officer in and having a conversation with a store manager and say, we need you to help us do this because clearly we don't have enough manpower to do this. I don't think the city and the sheriff's department together could have people sitting around or standing around in all these businesses. But I think that if we make a visit, speak to some of these managers of these businesses, it may go a long way in helping us to encourage them to have their employees help us.
And that's been our experience, you know? We went to, you know, some places, you know, that, you know, wasn't, just like you say, wasn't doing, you know, the CDC guidelines and so forth. And we've addressed it to the different store managers and supervisors there. And with us going there, a uniform officer, it goes a long ways. So here again, we can definitely make up a list of ones that are essential, go by, send an officer go by there and talk to the manager, supervisor, and, you know, and just encourage them to do this and so forth. And I know I went to Lowe's yesterday, you know, had to buy a couple of things, you know, and they had put the plexiglass up between the clerk and the customers, and they had the, you know, the little squares, you know, where you stand at the six feet apart, which I thought that was a good idea. And, you know, they said that with the little, when you do the little credit card machine, they use the pen and the pens always, you know, sanitized after each use. So I was really impressed how they was doing it there, you know? And maybe, you know, actually, we was, I'm not sure if, you know, one of the county offices here, they was taking about putting some plexiglass, you know, to get a hold of you and put some plexiglass up there to keep them separated from the customers, which if they're closing, probably won't have to worry about that. But just little things like I've seen at Lowe's and different businesses are doing, you know, we can gladly go by there and have a talk with them and give them these ideas and so forth and just make sure they are following these guidelines.
Yeah, and since you mentioned that, I'll just go ahead and tell you, commissioners, we have put up plexiglass in a lot of county offices. We went to the tax collector's office. We've been to the building department. We've been to the supervisor elections. Building department, we're trying to keep the doors closed with instructions outside to utilize a drop box that we have. We're putting as many drop boxes together as we can for others. I'm gonna probably talk to the clerk about a drop box over there at the finance department as well for retirees that make insurance payments and they can drop them off without coming in. So we're trying to take a lot of these measures as well. But anyway, I'll get with you. If you want to appoint someone, we can meet today and we'll start trying to go through and try to put together a list of...
Yes, I will.
...these non-essential.
I'll get with chief when we leave here and I want them to be involved too, since they got a lot of business inside of C-Limits and so, so we'll get with you and get something working.
Very good, thank you.
I have any questions for the sheriff?
Well, just if you don't mind, just on the heels of all the discussion we're having here, I mean, you guys are talking about the non-essentials and we do need to get those identified and have you guys talk to them. But the essential businesses, like you said, going in and talking to those managers, owners, whoever it may be, that's something definitely we need to do. I do think they're trying to do the best they can, but they, the ones I've spoken with are up for suggestions, any guidance that we can give them, they're willing to take, is the feedback that I'm getting. So, yeah, I think we need to do that.
I would take care of it.
I really do. And again, I don't think they're, they're not taking it as we're being hostile towards them. They just want some guidance to know if they're doing the right thing.
Yeah, exactly. And they are, you know, I met with Andy Jordan with the Florida Baptist Association, and I've talked to quite a few pastors, you know, and that's their concern is, you know, they want to have some type of church service and so forth, but then they don't want to violate the entire CDC rules or the governor's rules and so forth. So they're really concerned. And so we reached out and gave them quite a few ideas about, you know, some suggestions and so forth, and they're taking them. And so it's, they need guidance and they need some help and they really appreciate that from us. And matter of fact, I was actually supposed to be there, they had a little conference call and this meeting come at the same time, but I told them I would get with them after this meeting, see if anything had changed or if y'all decided anything changed from what was already, guideline was already there. So, but they're real anxious to find out information about what to do and be able to, you know, get the word out, the word of God out to them.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harris?
I was just gonna say, you know, for those of us, we're having special meetings for those that are tapped into this thing and have a really close relationship with trying to keep up with all of this information, we're perhaps more familiar than a lot of these employers in the community and employees because we're living it all day, every day right now. This is about all we're doing. So I agree with the sheriff that it probably is helpful to make those visits and talk to these people because they're not keeping up with everything that's going on. They probably want to know. And it's a good time to not only encourage them to follow the guidelines of the CDC, but also keep them apprised to what's actually going on in this arena. So it'd be really, really helpful to do that. I'll just say as well that the county administration office is remaining open. The library is the only department that we have told the employees that they don't need to come in. We're gonna put signs up at the county office and a few other locations indicating that we're only taking in employees and deliveries. We're trying to curtail all of this foot traffic that we otherwise experience on a regular basis. We've put notices up that we're not taking employment applications with few exceptions. If they can get us something, either fax it to us or email it to us, that's fine. But we're trying to cut down on people walking into that office. A lot of our foot traffic on a regular basis is people coming in and want to fill out an application. So we're trying to put a stop to that for now and let them just send us something by email. And we can send them an application if they can, otherwise get it off of our website. They can get it if they're, if they have a computer, they can print it out, fill it out, and then send it to us. Those are some of the things that we're doing and we're continuing to talk every day to try to figure out how to improve our ability to create the social distancing that we need. We've moved, for instance, time clocks, we've moved in some cases outside instead of inside small rooms where employees pile in to punch the time clock. So we're doing everything that we think we can do right now. And we'll continue to get creative as we go forward. I wanted to share one other thing with you though, and I waited until closer to the end of this conversation because I didn't want any of you reading it ahead of time and jumping to conclusions. I want to explain this as you look at it. I don't know how many extras I have here, but I'll give those if you wanted these. I told the chairman that I do a lot of my work at three-thirty in the morning. Those of you that are old like me usually wake up at three-thirty in the morning, need something to do. So I put this together, I commented on this the other day, and I had run some numbers on just how rapidly this thing can spread. I'll emphasize again, even though it's written on here in a couple of places, that this is not a prediction of what's gonna happen in Swanee County. This is just to help us understand just how quickly this virus can spread and how it can spread. I started with the, you know, with a comment here, for those that don't have a copy of this, that many locations in America are experiencing a doubling of the coronavirus cases every two days. And this was an illustration of what those numbers look like. And I started with March thirty because that was the last meeting that we had where we had this conversation. At that time, we knew we had two cases and believed that we would have a third one, third confirmation by the end of that day, which we ultimately received. And then by April one, it shows where you would have had four cases and April three, eight cases. And I think today is the second, isn't it?
It is.
And we're looking at seven cases, so we're kind of tracking pretty closely to what those numbers are representing in those communities where they're doubling every two days. Off to the right, it says acquaintances at three per day. So what this represents, if you go back up to March thirty, we had two cases. If those two people only had acquaintances or got in close contact with three people... Now, I can tell you, if you stop and think about it, you're probably having fairly close contact with more than three people a day, most of us are, that are operating in any type of business. Day one, that would have been six people that they would have come into close contact with, but if you multiply that by fourteen days, that would be eighty-four people that they could have come into close contact with. So if you just follow this schedule on down, you can see where a fourteen-day timeframe, if you go down to, let's say, April the thirteenth, by April thirteenth, if this were to track, like a lot of those, like all of the models that they say track pretty consistent with one another, but we know that there's some cases, plenty of cases, where that isn't true. And again, I'm not suggesting that this is accurate or that it's gonna be true. But by April thirteenth, we could have two-hundred-and-fifty-six confirmed cases in Swanee County if we were tracking those models like they are in a lot of your areas throughout the state and the nation. And how can that occur? Well, look at the number of acquaintances that could have been in close contact with those people by that time. If each of those persons involved had three acquaintances, close contacts a day, that would be ten-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two close contacts by April the thirteenth. That's the reason this thing can spread so rapidly, is that people, for fourteen days, you may not know that you're carrying the virus. And you can be in close contact with people. You can be in close contact with family members and friends and doing any number of things. That's why I think the social distancing is so important. But again, this isn't a prediction, and I'm hoping that we don't track this, that we don't continue tracking these numbers. Because right now, we're tracking them pretty closely. But if it were only, if you go all the way to the end of April or April twenty-fifth, if these numbers were to continue to track, and if it were only ten percent accurate, if it was only ten percent accurate, we could have sixteen-hundred-and-thirty-eight cases in Swanee County by April twenty-five. But it doesn't have to be that way. And I'm hoping that it isn't that way. And I'm confident that if we do everything that we can, we won't be anywhere near that number of cases. So again, this isn't a prediction, it's just an illustration of how many people maneuvering around in their normal course of events each day can be involved and be in close proximity to someone that could be carrying this virus. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
One thing that concerns me the most with this is it's continuing to be at the same... Out of the testing that we do, I mean, we're running right about ten percent that's coming back positive. I mean, we tested eighty people and we got seven cases, and I'm sure there's more that we'll be looking at. So that's very, very concerning to me, that ten percent of what we test is positive.
And we still have, I think he said ten that are outstanding?
Waiting for results, yeah.
Waiting for results.
I would just be scared to know what the number is if we was able, if we just had enough tests to test way more people. I mean, if that stays running at ten percent, we're in trouble. And we're already in trouble because they're here. And, go ahead.
No, be ready.
It's tough being, it's tough sitting here. People's right there in that video looking at us to make decisions and protect them.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if that's something that maybe Mr. Eddie Hand or, I don't know if Kerry's left, but I understand that these, uh, facilities, healthcare, uh, rehabilitation hospital, I know they're probably taking all the precautions that they know to take. Is that something that you guys frequent, visit, check in on? I know you're there from time to time.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have, um, been in contact with them for the last couple of weeks, just about every day. We're having, um, awaiting a return call from Swanee Healthcare, uh, but the other two, um, Surrey Place and Dowling Park. We have set a, set protocols in place. Um, I'm, this morning, as soon as we get back to the station and get it organized, we've got some of our, um, reserve ambulance cots that we utilize for our special events and stuff that we use on the, um, uh, the golf cart, you know, and the, the player says when we're at special events. The nursing home does not have any, any way to move their patients inside the hospital if they're bed bound. If they're in a wheelchair, if they're ambulatory or wheelchair, of course they can, but if they're bed bound, they cannot. So, um, we're gonna drop off a stretcher during this timeframe for them to, to be able to use. We're gonna, unless it's a, an emergency that the patient cannot be moved, um, you know, they've got a broken hip or they're in cardiac arrest or something like that, that, you know, they can't move the patient, then the nursing home is actually going to bring the patient to us outside. They are doing everything that they can. Dowling Park Nursing Home has an isolation area set up for returned patients. So when we bring a patient back to them from hospital or wherever else they have been, they go through a certain entrance into an isolation area and they stay in that isolation area for 14 days, just to be sure that they're not, you know, contagious before they go back into their normal, normal population of the nursing home. So, uh, we're, we're diligently working with them. The, the biggest reason is, is, uh, you know, every day, we're getting more and more possible cases that we're responding to. And so we're not wanting to cross contaminate with elderly being the, you know, the most susceptible, susceptible, um, age of the population. We don't want to cross contaminate and possibly take something into one of these extended care facilities, but also that we don't want to possibly bring anything out as well. So the most, you know, the best way to do that is to try to stay outside of it if we can. Now, what we do in this business is dangerous every day and we understand that. And we're gonna do whatever it takes to, um, take care of our citizens. And if they can't be moved, we're gonna gown up and mask up and glove up and goggle up and everything else and, and we're gonna go in there and take care of the patients. But we're, we're trying to, uh, you know, trying to limit that. The, so the, yes, to answer your question, specifically on extended cares, we've been in very close contact with them on a daily basis. This thing's been so fluid with, with everything. You know, we send out about five, six emails a day to our staff with different hospital changes on their, their procedures for, for receiving patients when we get there. We've been, we've been very, very busy with that because it changes sometimes two or three times a day. We are in a, um, you know, we are in pretty decent shape with our department at this time with our, you know, with our PPE. We were able to get, um, our Tyvek suits that we needed, that we were short on. We got that order in and we've got a secondary order placed and I've, we're not in a, an emergency situation on gloves yet, but we are getting lower than where I'd like to be on gloves. But we do have, we had a partial order come in on one of our orders. I've got two other orders put in with different companies.
If you had to take an educated guess, how long will your supplies last that you got on hand right now?
Oh, that I have on hand right now, I can, I can go probably a good month and a half.
That, that's if we don't have a bunch of issues, yeah.
Yeah, the problem is that, you know, um, on most of our supplies, you know, we're, biggest, biggest thing is gloves, but you know, it's not just, you can't just go on the call load basis because, you know, in a normal, in a normal call, on a normal emergency medical call, the paramedic in the back may only use one set of gloves. You know, because they put them on and they're dealing with that patient the whole time. The driver may use two pairs of gloves on a call because they, they put them on to deal with the patient and then they take them off the drive to the, you know, hospital and then they'll put a pair back on to get the patient back inside. But with this, with this situation, they're having to, you know, they're having to use two or three of each. You know, if, if the driver has to be involved with, with dealing, you know, and we've got a lot of different, we're doing things way different than we normally do. You know, if we're going to a possible case, we're trying to keep the driver totally not involved with anything. If that patient can walk to the ambulance, the paramedic goes in, gowned up by themselves and walks into the ambulance and gets them in and the driver never even has contact. So it saves that PPE and it saves that exposure. We've, we've set McAlpin as our, as our dedicated station, um, for possible calls unless it's a, a life or death emergency and the closest truck needs to go. If it's just a, you know, if it's a, an emergency that 10, 15 minutes isn't gonna make a difference on, um, and we make that decision off of the information that dispatch gets from them, then we send that station and that limits the amount of exposure that we have to our crews. Because just like every other small business, you know, we're, we're not a small business, but we're a small department. I can't do without many of my guys having to go home and be quarantined for 14 days because they're possibly, you know, possibly positive. It'll put us into a financial hardship and, and also just not having the people to respond to the community. So fortunately, we've only had, um, we've had two employees that, that have, were experiencing, you know, just some flu-like symptoms. They were not related to any calls that they had been on that we're aware of, that, you know, they just, um, they came, one of them came back actually from vacation sick. He's been at home just making sure that he doesn't have anything. He was tested and he was negative. But, uh, we're, we're doing everything, um, as Mr. Harris was saying, we've done the same thing with our office. We have signs up that we're keeping all non-essential personnel out of the administrative offices and limiting even our crews from being able to come in there unless they have a reason to be in there and they can, they can ask to come in. Our supply room is in the front and I don't have anywhere else to put it, but I've implemented the, the officer on duty is the only person that can come get supplies, uh, unless, if they're out of the station on a call, then one person from the crew can come in at, at a time and get it to try to keep the, you know, social distancing stuff and, and also limit the exposure that we receive on the administrative side because if I lose two or three of my administration folks, we're gonna be in trouble as well. So.
Sure.
We're, one thing that I would like to, to just give a recommendation on with some of the stuff you guys were talking about before with the stores and everything, if this, if it doesn't work with the sheriff's office going in and just talking to, you know, the managers about helping with the social distance and everything, I would, I would, you know, recommend to, you know, look, to think about, um, on, you know, primarily your, your grocery stores and your, your, you know, but put in a, a capacity rule, you know, like Alachua County has done. You're standing in line to get in the store and when one comes out, one goes in. And it's, it's allowing that distancing to take place.
I had it here for us to discuss.
Okay, I've been in, I've been in several stores myself. I mean, we all have to go get groceries and everything, um, and I have seen a lot of that where, you know, the, you know, the stores are doing what they can. They've got, Publicis has got taped down for the lines, all Walgreens, all the different ones, but a lot of the folks just, you know, just aren't, just not doing it. And, um, you know, Adam McCook has been going around kinda doing some surveys on the stores for us, you know, to see what, and, you know, the stores are doing their part. The people, uh, some of the people are not. And, and it's not all of the people. Like you said, you have those, those 10 percenters, you know, but it's, if you limit the amount of people that are in the store, it'll, it, I know it's inconvenient if you have to go wait, but at least the store is able to stay open that way. If we, if they can't use their common sense, you know, the, then, but we can keep it open for the people that need it.
We're gonna have some more discussion on that in just a few minutes. Uh, but also I just appreciate what y'all doing and I would like you to keep a close eye on your supplies and, and please keep us informed if there's.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're, like I said, we just placed another order for the, for more suits. And it's not gonna be a problem, you know, that we're aware of from talking to them yesterday, getting that filled. One other thing that Tim brought up to me that was some, some conversation that I guess some of the other county departments are having issues getting some cleaning supplies. Some of the companies will only sell to first responders at this point.
Right.
You know, whatever we have to do in, in our county for us to get this stuff for these other departments, if we need to order it for them, just have those department heads contact me and we'll, we'll, we'll get it done however we have to do it and worry about the, the money spent later.
I appreciate that. And also, uh, with our, with all our healthcare facilities, and I know you talk with, you know, you interact with them daily, uh, I would like to know that those folks have what they need too. If there's something that they're short on or they're concerned about or they think they're gonna have a problem with, I would just, uh, ask you to please get word to us in some way, shape or fashion and, and it's our responsibility to try to do what we can.
And that definitely will.
That was gonna be a follow-up question, Chairman. I was gonna ask Mr. Hand, uh, and I'm sure they have taken every precaution. I know they're trying to do the best within their facilities, but who oversees that? I mean, other than themselves? Is that a state thing? Do you know that?
Yeah, the ACHA is a, is an, um, organization that, that oversees any medical facilities, hospitals, nursing homes and those type of things. And they oversee, you know, to make sure that, that they're in compliance with the type of things that we do. You know, like we're, we're overs, you know, overseen by the Department of Health EMS section is who does, oversees our department. But ACHA is one of the main organizations for any healthcare facilities. I do know that Monday, uh, no, yesterday, I believe it was yesterday, ACHA was here visiting our facilities, um, along with Mr. Waldron. He went, you know, as well with them. So they, they've been in the community. And I do know that the state actually contracted with, um, AMR, which is a huge ambulance company, and they're going to all, um, assisted living facilities or nursing facilities in the state and doing assessments on what they need, um, what they need to improve on if they're not following any best practices that they, to try to help stop it, the spread, and making recommendations to them and then filing it with the state. And if, if there are issues that need a higher level team to come in, then that is happening on the state level.
And that's what I wanted to know.
Right.
So thank you for sharing that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Eddie, before you step down, I had a couple of questions for you. One of them you probably can't answer, but I'd like to know if we can get an answer to this. I'll start with the one I think you can't answer. The numbers that you gave for, uh, supplies, I think you spent, you said you've got enough about to get about a month, month and a half on gloves. Is that a skewed number based upon our so far, uh, potential exponential growth of this, of this, uh?
Probably it would, it, I mean, I, I'm, I'm looking at, looking at what our average call load is right now and I don't. It could be, yes. It could be, it might not be that long, but with what I have on order that I've got, um, confirmed shipping dates on when they're coming in, I believe we'll be fine.
I'd really have more than enough then obviously.
Well, well, what we've done, I've ordered, I've ordered enough because I've got it, I've got it in my budget for, you know, my annual supplies. We don't normally order because we don't have the room to store a lot of stuff with what we have at the station right now. But I've went ahead and ordered enough gloves that if it went, if it was a normal call load, we would make it to the end of our budget year with what we have. And if it increases, we'll be able to get through, you know, a couple of months. Like I say, we're, it's, part of it is retraining our guys. We had to go around and, and pull stuff from the trucks. You know, you might have a truck that has three boxes of the same size glove on it when it only needs one. And to make sure that we were, and, and we, we've locked up our PPE to where we're rationing it only by who one of the officers has to go get it for them. Hand sanitizer, we had, when this thing started, we had, had put orders in and hand sanitizer normally is one of the things that a couple of cases a year gets us through the whole year. And we had almost a full case, but we put on order for another couple of cases of it when this started.
You got a full case of hand sanitizer and you didn't tell us about it?
We did. We were down to four bottles. We went around and, and like I said, it was retraining the guys. You know, every crevice that they could stick one in an ambulance had one. And we went from four bottles to probably 35 bottles. Some of them were partially used, but when we rounded them back up off the trucks and we're rationing them out now, so to try to get this stuff to go through. And it's not, it's not that they were wasting them on the trucks before. That's, you know, they would use them. It wasn't going bad, they weren't, they were using them, but it was just they had one stuck in every convenient spot so they could grab it. But if this truck's got five on it and this truck has none, we, we have to start rationing it. So on the supply issue, I think we're gonna be okay. So, you know, and we have, we also have the state resources as far as requesting them from the state that emergency management has put in for the, for the county. It has not come in yet, but that will give us extra on top of what we've gotten supplied.
I was notified by, um, I, I believe it's a fairly local, or a brewing company or a alcohol-related company that's been approved to do hand sanitizers. And they said if, uh, only serious request, but if anyone needs, needs one, we can reach out to them as well. So.
Right.
And they would, they would be glad to produce anything that we need. But, um, the second, the second question that I have involves the hospital. Seeing that we have one, uh, patient already in our county at the hospital, do you know what the, um, situation is as far as the hospital's ability? How many ventilators that they may have? How many spaces that they may have? How's that gonna affect, um, uh, the care of our own, uh, folks here versus having to send them out of county?
I do not know the exact numbers. I can find that out, out, I do. But I do know that speaking, and I do, I have a meeting with, with Donna Reagan as soon as I leave here, so I can get some of that information for you. But the, the, the plan as far as the hospital goes, moving forward with HCA taking over and, and all this and happening in May 1st, that they've still been really quiet on it and we're not getting much information when I speak to them. But I was, um, I was assured by Rick Nagler, the CEO, um, and I'm not sure if any of you guys have talked to him or not, but all he told me to make sure that, that, that we let our, that I let our, you know, elected officials know, I had the mayor asking some questions at one of the meetings at the EOC and I called and asked him specifically, is that they're still being quiet when, when May 1st gets here, he will be in our community to speak to everybody and, and that, because I asked him specifically, with this going on, would there be any delay in closing the, the rooms and, on the floor in the hospital? And he did not give me an exact answer of anything other than that he's a very community, community-oriented person and that whatever it takes to take care of this community during this will take place. And that's the way he left it. So he wouldn't say he was leaving it open, but I also know that if the census of all these hospitals start, you know, start filling up, they've got these rooms available that they own and they're gonna utilize them. It's just simple as that. They'll, they'll have to.
I mean, there are other facilities could possibly be packed out.
Right.
And on the heels of that question, um, do, are, are any of our nursing homes able to, um, to utilize their spaces, their, their rooms so that in isolation type of situations where they can put a, a patient on a ventilator, if they have those ventilators available and, and put them in the room and their staff trained to be able to take care of, of those patients without contaminating the rest of the facility? Or is it simply that they're gonna go to the hospital when they get to that point where they have to?
Most of those patients are gonna end up, if they're, if they're ventilator, if they're ventilator dependent, those, those patients, unless they're a normal ventilator, you know, they're not because of this. If they're a normal, if they're normally on event, um, all the time, then they may, and I'm not aware of any of those patients even being in any of the nursing homes. being in any of the nursing homes. Um, if they get to that point, they're gonna be going to a hospital. They won't be staying at the nursing home. They're, they're, they're gonna keep the nursing homes, you know, now whether, I don't believe, the question you're asking is if we had to utilize that as an isolation area on, on top of the hospital here or whatever, um, they would have to put more staffing on with the level of staffing that they normally have on, because they, you know, they normally have one or two RNs working at a time, and then everybody else is a, is a LPN.
Or a CNA.
Or a CNA. So, to be able to take care of that ventilator patient, they would have to have an RN level or higher.
Okay. I'm just trying, I know that a lot of the, the place, a lot of, a lot of cities, municipalities, uh, spaces where there, this becomes a big issue, there's, it's always a, an issue over space and, um, available hospital space and medical space. And given our, our limited resources here in this county as far as that's concerned, I'm just wondering if it would be, uh, a, a, a possible solution to rather than having them sent to the hospital and filling up that space that they.
I don't believe it would. It's gonna, it's gonna take us, taking them wherever that's open, um, because their census is almost full all the time as well.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be in favor of taking anybody to a nursing home that's got the virus.
Well, the truth is.
Well, not if they take one, two in their home.
The state.
Yeah.
The state would have to be involved before that could ever occur. So.
Yeah.
If we get to that point, we're gonna know well in advance of that point, and the state's already gonna be.
Right.
Intimately involved in that decision.
And, and I wasn't talking about bringing people into the nursing home. I was talking about those that are tested positive in the nursing home rather than taking them out to the hospital and transferring again, uh, that we were, they were able to treat them.
And that's what, that's what they're, the Department of Health right now is recommending to these nursing homes is not to even move them, just isolate them. We'll come in and test them. If you think they're positive, we'll test them. Leave them there and isolate them. Now, if they get to the point of a medical emergency, they're gonna have to go somewhere else. The nursing home's not capable of taking care of that.
Did, who'd you say one had already quarantined in an area for that? Was that Dowling Park you said?
Dowling Park has a, has a quarantine area for returned patients coming back.
Returned patients.
Right, from wherever they're at. They come back to the nursing home, say they've been admitted to the hospital for a week for some procedure and they're coming back. They're not showing any signs or anything, but they bring them back to a quarantine area just to make sure.
As a precaution.
For fourteen days, they go into that area of.
I like that, yeah.
And then they make sure they don't start getting any symptoms.
Right.
Because they've been outside of the nursing home.
It's a great idea.
And then we're doing, like I said, we're doing all of our patient transfers, um, outside of the facility. So, their people will come out and get them. We don't even go in. So, we, we don't take the chance of taking anything in there as well, unless it's a dire emergency.
I wonder if there's a possibility to ask in the other places if they would be able to have.
I don't know why we couldn't suggest it.
A different.
I'm trying to, I mean, we, they have all limited access, like, like, you know, sorry, places are one in, one out anyway. But Swanee Healthcare had, you know, five different entrances that we could go into. They've stopped all access in and out of the building except through the main front entrance. So, when we go to get a patient, it doesn't matter where in that building that we've been going, we have to go through the front door, um, starting hopefully this afternoon. If I can get them to call me back, um, I've had some communication issues there and I'm trying to fix that. But if I can get, the other two I have already set up, and by today, they will have stretchers that they can, that they can bring any patient to us unless it's somebody they feel they can't move. Um, and then, you know, due to the medical problem, then we'll, you know, we'll go in. But other than that, we're trying to limit our access to where we don't take anything in, especially where they don't have it, you know?
Right.
And, uh, so, um, we've got, we'll have that all set up. And then I'm also gonna call Michelle this morning, and, and most of their patients are ambulatory up there. So, they'll be able to just walk them onto us, you know, at the ambulance.
I'm just so grateful for all our healthcare workers. And, I mean, it, it's gotta be the most frightening thing in the world to actually have to suit up and go to work where you know that there's something there, but you got to go do your job. And, and they, they go do it every day. And, uh, my heart goes out to them and I just appreciate them so much.
I'm very proud of our staff. Um, we've, fortunately, we've only transported two of these positive cases. And even more fortunate, it ended up being the same crew. So, if we do, if they do get, um, you know, if they do get exposed, you know, at least, you know, it's not, you know, more, you know, more of the guys, it's the same one. And that's, and that's what we're trying to do with setting one, one truck up for, you know.
That's what I was gonna ask. Is it just, you got?
Yeah, we've got one, Station Two in McAlpin, uh, because it's in the center of the county, we designated as our, as our station for that. Both trucks there may respond to these calls, but it limits, you know, now.
That's right.
There are times that both of them may be on another emergency call. I don't have anything designated. Now, if we start breaking off case after case that we're going to, you know, if this thing really kicks off, then we're gonna put some extra units on. You know, we're in the state of emergency, FEMA will cover the overtime. We're gonna put some overtime trucks on to be able to dedicate just to this.
Right.
Um, but at this point, we haven't gotten a number of cases to, to pull that trigger yet. We're able to, you know, operate just as we are. But we have, for the most part, tried to dedicate those trucks unless it's a dire emergency. I mean, if somebody has these symptoms and they, they're not, you know, they, they're about to quit breathing on them, we're sending the closest truck to them and they'll, they'll gown up and do everything, and then we'll worry about deconning that apparatus later. But we're, we're trying to send that one station, and that way, just those two trucks are exposed to anything. And, um, and dispatch is getting that information from, uh, I've been in contact with Dion several times to, because that's a fluid, a fluid amount, set of questions that needs to be asked as well. You know, we started this thing off a month ago, have you traveled internationally? You know, well, a couple, you know, a week or so ago, when, you know, I, we started asking questions, have you been out of Swanee County? Because Columbia County had cases, Latwood County, you know, all, just to, you know, and, and now it's pretty much, have you, I told her last night, I said, you know, have you been out of your house? Kinda. And, and if you're having these symptoms, then we're gonna consider it as a positive case. And, and a lot of the hospitals, uh, I mean, I don't know if they've got these unlimited supply caches somewhere that, on these big hospitals in Gainesville, but, you know, they're, they're calling and griping at us because they wanna, they want a mask on every patient when they show up. And they're, they're griping and saying, hey, you're showing up and you don't have a mask on this patient. Well, this patient didn't meet any criteria to need a mask. Yes, they may have it, but I can't waste a mask that I need for our people, um, you know, on a person that doesn't show symptoms. Now, if they show symptoms, we're gonna put a mask on them and on us to protect us and them. But if they're not showing any signs or symptoms, I can't waste that PPE. And that's, so like I say, I, we're dealing with those kind of issues with these other hospitals around in, in other communities that, that they want, you know, want PPE on every single patient and want us to wear PPE on every single call. And we haven't reached that point yet. I mean, if we go to a normal call, yes, they might have it. There, there's a possibility that some of us in this room right now have it.
Do, do.
But we have to be smart with what we're doing because there are limited amounts of PPE available, and we've gotta make sure we have it when we go into the bad ones that we know we need it on. So.
I, I can understand that, but do you, do we need to treat it as if?
Well.
Safety of your guys.
Well, we are, we are to, to a certain extent on, you know, the masks and, and things like that. But as far, I mean, they wear gloves, they wear gloves on every call every day. I mean, that's been something to do.
Right, sure.
On every call. Um, the mask, the mask part of it, um, yes, they are wearing more masks than they, than we started off at. But as far as, as that patient, you know, be, if, if we use, we have a limited number of masks. If we put a mask on every patient, you know, you're looking at three calls, uh, on every, if we did on every single call, you're looking at three masks that are, that are done for, you know, for every single call. We run, you know, we average about forty calls a day. You know, we won't be too long before we're out of mask and they're, the, the state's sending them out. We got about six boxes of them at the EOC the other day. Well, there's twenty-four in a box. So.
They go quick then.
So, they go, they would go pretty quick. So, we're doing our best to, I mean, they're wearing, our guys are smart enough to know when they need to wear them and when they don't with the, with the assessment that they're doing. And as long as they stay six feet away from them, if they're not showing symptoms, you know, we gotta get, that's why we're doing our limiting. Like I said, we're having one, one paramedic go in and do the assessment. They're staying six feet away from them while they're asking questions. And they're finding out all this different stuff before they make the decisions of what they need to do. Now, if they.
I got you.
Dispatch is doing that as well. So, if it's a possible case before the person ever goes in the house, they are putting their PPE on. My first thing is sa, is the safety of, of our guys, because if I, if we lose them, we can't take care of the safety of citizens. And then we've taken care of the safety, you know, safety of that patient as well. But, you know, there again, it's, it's just something that, you know, that they're doing in different communities. And, and, you know, I read it, I read it on the news every day. I mean, they're making masks out of, at Shands UF now, out of, you know, sterile material that wraps up the sterile instruments for surgery because they can't get the normal mask. And we're fortunate to have a good cache of them to get us through this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Fleming?
The safest practice is the three Cs that they had said, you know, common sense and being cautious. But staying home, which is hard for, for a lot of us to do, uh, is hard. Just wanna go into a little thing. It's hard to, you got grandchildren to tell them, I can't grab you and hug you. A two-year-old, it's a hard thing to do to, when they run up to you, you, you try to shoe them back. I mean, children understand, but the grandchildren does, doesn't understand.
Right.
Um, I was thinking about mine, you know, you know, you see them through a window because when you go around individuals you don't know for fourteen days who's carrying, as you just said just a while ago, that whole truth. You don't know who have that.
Right.
We don't, we don't know, they're uncertain. We just don't know. But it's, it, at the same time, it's hard to, those babies and a grandparent, you know, grandpa. I don't, my grandparents gone, but, um, if I was around them, I probably wanna embrace them. But it's, it's, it's one of the things that when the sheriff, for instance, when, when they go out and talk to these businesses, I've, I've saw a lot of patrons, they almost rub elbows with you, you know, and I'll stop. I'll stop when I, you know, and, and try to figure out which way they're coming. If, if they're coming, if I'm in the aisle, I'll go to the left or to the right instead of, you know, having that, almost that touch. But, uh, it, it ain't, it's not to the point that you trying to put businesses out of business. It's just the fact that you're trying to eliminate the possibility of, of, uh, this virus spreading at this time.
Of this.
Yes. These numbers, this, this, this illustration that we just received.
Yes, sir.
It almost bring you to your knees. It, it bring you to your knees, brings you to common sense, that the more that you pollinate, uh, the more that you get around individuals, that possibility is, is a possibility that you take care of it back to someone that's innocent.
Oh, most definitely. It, it crosses, crosses my mind. It crosses every one of our guys' mind every day. But, you know, and there's, there's, you know, I read an article this morning when I got up about, um, EMS workers in these hot zones like in New York City that are sleeping in their car because they're, they know they're in a hot zone. They know they probably are exposed. They're not even going home. They're sleeping in their cars because they don't wanna take the possibility of taking it back home to their family.
Right.
And, you know, and we're, we're in weird times. I mean, there's, you know, I don't, I've, in, in the past, when I get home from work, you know, I, I sit in the office most of the day, you know, or I'm, or I'm going to a meeting or I'm going, you know, I go on a few, if there are major call, I go on them, but I'm not out in the field. But when I come home from work, I may sit down on the back porch and, and sit there and talk to my wife, and I'm in uniform for a while. I walk in the back door now, I take my shoes off outside and leave them, you know, leave them in the garage, and I go straight to the laundry room and take my uniforms off, and I go get in the shower as soon as I get home to make sure that, because my family is at home.
Yeah.
My wife's had to close her business, you know, because she has a retail shop, and she did it voluntarily a couple of weeks ago because she, one, her business stopped to almost nothing, but she felt like that if she didn't, that, and she, some, you know, a lot of her clientele's elderly, they come in there and somebody contracts it from her shop. She couldn't live with herself, so she went ahead and shut her business. And my, uh, you know, the rest of my family, my son works for me on the farm, so we've been home other than going to the grocery store. But I know that I have to go out every day and, you know, um, so, the, you know, I'm a, I'm a handshaker. When I walk up to somebody, I'm gonna shake their hand. And have, it's been, it's been a very big change for me to, to walk up to somebody and not be able to greet them the way I was raised to greet people. And, you know, and I'll, I still catch myself going to do it and then, oh, you know, do the elbow bump or something, you know?
Oh, I know exactly.
Their elbow bump.
I know exactly what you're saying. I hadn't got a hug from Commissioner Fleming in three weeks.
And I'm missing that. But, uh.
Yeah.
You know, back to, to what we, the issue where we were sharing and talking about, uh, Mr. Harris agreed that, well, he's, he's volunteering himself. Sheriff, I like to, I like to see in the chief, I like to see this go into action immediately.
Absolutely.
Uh, that, that we, we don't hesitate because I know this, this just, um, it's just an illustration, but it's a whole lot of, it's, there's a whole lot of truth to this. One person, it just, it just go on and on and on and on in fourteen days what this could turn out to. So, I, I would say, let's do it.
Well, our numbers, that's the first I had seen and heard of that, but our numbers are exactly on par for what you've done so far from the dates you started it at. So, you know, we've got to figure out a way to, you know, the only, the good thing is, is there, that it is, you know, kinda localized at, at the moment, you know, but it doesn't matter if these people, if we can't get people to, you know, I've, I've seen several quotes, you know, online and stuff, and, and the virus doesn't move itself, people move it.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman?
And we can, and people need to stay home and stop moving it, and it'll go away.
Do we need this in the form of a motion?
So.
That, that they start immediately?
You folks have any other, do you guys have any other questions for me?
Yes, I do.
Uh, just.
Uh, one back to the nursing home, and, and you may be able to, as you're looking into this, to address this, uh, issue. One of the questions that was posed to me this week by constituent was, um, uh, why would the nursing homes be continually taking in new patients? And I, and I realize that there's a, obviously a, an answer to that, but in particularly, if you have a nursing home that you know is, has got a, um, a, a problem with, uh, at least a related issue to the COVID-19, uh, are they, um, are they, have they halted taking in new patients, um, without this isolation ward? Uh, like you said, that, uh, this, this area where, um, Dowling Park has, uh, for fourteen days of isolation, how are they dealing with it? Right now, we don't have, we don't see any, I think, over at, at least not yet, tested positive in any of the other, uh, two, uh, facilities. But Swanee Healthcare in particular, do they have something in place like that to as well? Or they, have they stopped taking in new patients?
I do not know the answer to that. I, I have no oversight over that at all. Um, and I do know that the isolation area at Dowling Park is return of their current patients that have been out to the hospital or a treatment of some sort or something like that. I don't, that would be a, that would be a question for the state because they, they regulate the nursing.
Carrie left. You were the only one left.
Right. No, I, I have no idea on, on whether they're even taking new patients, but I do know that, that the conversations I've had with Dowling Park, the isolation areas for their current patients that they have coming back to the nursing home from some type of hospital treatment.
Thank you, Chief Hand. We'll pitch us this morning.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Fleming, you're, you had a question about the, uh, county administrator and the sheriff getting, is that what you were saying?
Do we need to put this in the form of a motion that they do this immediately, you know?
No, we're gonna go ahead and do it.
Okay.
Um, we don't need a motion on that. We're just gonna agree to sit down and try to put a list together as quick as we can and get it underway. You okay with that, Commissioner?
I'm good with that. Thank you.
Should, should one, uh, should one commissioner serve in that group or not?
No, we're gonna leave the politics out of it.
Okay.
Uh, Mr., we're gonna have some more discussion on some of these things, but, uh, Mr. Scott, Greg Scott, you come up real quick and just, uh, you had sent an email out, and I would just like you to run through a couple of high points with it, just, just for the public since they're watching.
We have, uh, at the marshal department, we are candy sanitizing playground equipment and, uh, other apparatus. Um, we have closed the office to outside folks. Our receptionist is right there at the door, where she can open the door and ask any questions on the doors. We've got instructions on, you can call us, you can email us, you can, again, she's right there, so she gets slide door open, window open and if you need to. Uh, we're taking deliveries, just essential personnel. Um, we are prepared to alter our. Um, we are prepared to alter our, we haven't done it yet, but we're probably going to do next phase is to alter our park staff's, um, routine and have them split shifts so that nobody's riding together. We've already limited some of that, only touching, having our guys touch the same equipment every day, not sanitizing it also. Um, but, uh, biggest thing for us is making sure we keep things sanitized as best we can, monitoring the playgrounds, playgrounds are open right now, probably the next phase that we'd go into is closing playgrounds, even though they're not used much at all, and also basketball courts. Had a report over the weekend, a, a large group of folks playing basketball at one of the parks, um, taking out the goals on those, um, parks, in my opinion, need to stay open as much as we can, so people, as long as they're social distancing, had a conversation with the, with the chief, make sure that he's got whatever he needs from us, uh, the city, city chief. Um, they can't be there at all places, but I will make sure they've got what they need, have a conversation if they need to with the group, just say, hey. But if we need to do something on our end to limit that also, um, we are prepared, if we need to, to remove picnic tables from playground pav- pavilions, uh, we're not there yet, um, we haven't seen folks gathering and things, monitoring it over the weekend. Um, but we're prepared to take it, the, the next steps as we need to. Uh, at the airport, uh, we've closed the terminal for anybody other than essential personnel coming in there. We're there to help assistant travelers as they need to, we're sanitizing the self-service fuel, uh, when they come and go. Um, we have a remote access for the restroom if they need to use restroom, that stays sanitized also. Um, because we are still self-service on add fuel, we need to remain open because, uh, a lot of the surrounding areas, they pump the gas for add fuel also off of trucks, it's not self-service, so in order people to get through and gone, we need to make sure they have access to fuel where they can keep on going. Um, but, um, you know, we have, you know, still doing business, it just looks a little bit different now.
Absolutely. Appreciate you. Anybody got any questions, comments from Mr. Scott?
Mr. Chairman, I do. Um, and just, I mean, you had a little bit of a conversation outside. Um, but the thought is, is, is the longer we keep our, our parks recreation open, our parks open to, um, um, to people gathering, the, the more opportunity there is obviously for social distancing guidelines to be, um, to be ignored. Um, and also, the, the more our staff has to go out there and continually clean, uh, which is a resource issue as well as putting them in, in situations where they could possibly, um, be exposed to something. Uh, so my question is, is at what point do we determine that this is, um, it's necessary just to shut down our parks recreation completely, our parks completely and, and, um, remove all the picnic tables, get them all, all out of the way? I, and I don't, you know, this is, a lot's changed since, uh, this, this month, this past Monday, a lot has changed. And, um, uh, and my concern is, is that we do what we have to do to get out in front of this thing, uh, to the best of our ability. And to me, I, I know that kids, a lot of kids need a place to, to play, especially when they're out of school and such, but they do have, uh, yards, most of them do have yards or areas around their, uh, places where they live. Um, I just don't want to put any additional kids, uh, or families in, in risk, especially our employees.
Currently, we're not seeing large gatherings at all anywhere. Uh, there are very sporadic use of playgrounds and almost no ballfield use at all. Uh, the other day, there's a group of about three kids out playing baseball, um, there may be a family coming out with a daughter and, and son, um, you know, a family coming in and hitting a few balls and things. Uh, we've not seen it on the fields. Um, we'll see a few people coming and having lunch at a picnic table, um, but we haven't seen, uh, birthday parties or family reunions or larger groups. Uh, we've not seen more than, um, except for Heritage Park, uh, we haven't seen, um, uh, just three or four kids at a time on the playground. Uh, we still see quite a few people walking the trails and that sort of thing, but they're spread out, may have a couple walking, but, um, we really haven't seen a lot of the non, non, um, social, whatever it's called this week. Um, but the people, people are, are staying apart and, 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 um, and we're.
I'm not interested in taking that away from the people at this point in time. I think, I think you're, you're a good person to oversee that, and if you see a problem, I, I believe you're capable of, and your people's capable of taking care of it.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Oh, I just, people's gotta have a little room, and, I mean, a lot of it's walking, a lot of it's letting their kids get out and run. You know, I mean, you can't be locked up in the house but for so long. And I, it's, some of it's common sense. I understand what you're saying, your concerns, and, and they're duly noted, but, uh, we, we have to have a little bit here to just kind of get out and move around.
Again, we are going to change our park staff rotation or how they work, uh, so we've got eyes on things every day, um, so that as we see an, an issue, we can call the chief or the sheriff and say, can we send somebody over to help disperse if we can't do it? Um, or we'll, we'll take the next step. Problem is, like with playgrounds, for example, um, it's part of the park, um, you can do taping, you can do temporary fencing, but that doesn't stop anybody. That, that stops, you know, the, the seventy, eighty percent that wouldn't do it anyway. Um, so, it's only, we can be aware, we can have conversations, we can do those things, but, um, a lot of the parks are not, where you can close them very, very easily, but, um, Weldon Park's a good example, playground, walking trail, basketball court, um, and, but there's no fencing, so.
Um, I, I, I would continue to encourage sheriff's department to, uh, on our closed springs and, and parks that we actually can close down, to, uh, continue to monitor, uh, any people violating those closures.
Right, absolutely. We're, we're standing in close contact, try to make sure they're included in anything we're doing differently. Um, and again, I hope the, it communicates back to us too, both sheriff and chief, if, if they see something we could be doing differently, you know, they may see it at a different time of the day than, than we do, so.
I got folks on Facebook that are taking pictures of, um, that, that are friends on Facebook going down to Little River and taking pictures and going, ooh, it's still high, you know, it's going, what are you doing in there? I mean, but, uh, it's happening still.
You can't fix some stuff.
I know you can't.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, we appreciate your update.
Thank you, sir.
This time, I think each commissioner's probably got some comments and questions except for Commissioner Richardson, he'll go last. He's used all his time. But Commissioner Hale, you got some items you'd like to discuss?
Yeah, I just had a few things, yeah, I'd like to just get the board's opinion on and, and open up some discussion. Uh, there's been a lot of things already discussed here this morning, some direction that we're gonna take and, and give into.
But, hey, before you do that, let's take a five-minute recess.
Go ahead.
Rest room real quick.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yep, that's right.
Thank you, by the way.
Okay, welcome everybody back.
Oh, thank you.
Mandy, if you'd please take your seat.
Immediately.
Uh, okay, we're gonna open the floor to some kind of roundtable discussion here with the commissioners. Commissioner Hale, I apologize for interrupting you there.
No, no problem.
Move forward.
Uh, just, like I said, some of the things that've been discussed here, we, we've already got some direction on, but I just want to throw some other things out at you. Uh, and again, I think this is some of the conversations I've had with some business owners, uh, you know, they're taking upon themselves to try to do the right thing and to disinfect and take care of their employees, but they're open for suggestions, and that's, uh, that's what I'm kind of looking this board for. Let's, you know, they, they're open for it, let's give it to them, you know, if that's what they want to hear. Um, so with that, I mean, just, anyone have anything? If not, I'll throw some things out there.
No.
Well, I, I, I'll, so I'll start with our banks. I know the banks are trying to do, and I haven't spoken to all the banks, but I, this was a personal experience, went through the drive-through, I don't know what they call that thing, the apparatus, it comes down and you put your check in and your paperwork in and send it back. I'm sure it has a real nice name for it, but, um.
Air tube.
Yeah, you know, I just want to make sure that those things are getting sanitized on a regular basis, 'cause I'm just trying to think smart, like, what do we touch every day? What, what is something, you know, these are essential businesses, they're gonna stay open, they need to be open for us to conduct our livelihood, uh, just as a reminder to them to, to do the right thing, you know, sanitize those. Someone mentioned pens earlier, that they were sanitizing pens, there's a pen that comes through there, I know a lot of you guys like me probably use your own pen, but, um, that's just something I'm thinking of, moving forward. I know Busy Bee was here the other day, I did reach out to, uh, Mr. Freeman and, uh, asked him what he was doing as far as, you know, taking care of his employees and, and also the public. Uh, they're bleaching everything, he said. They just, you know, pumps, counters, floors, um, but he was open for any suggestions as well, so.
Just, just to touch on that, me and myself and Mr. Harris, uh, I talked with Marshall at Busy Bee, and we actually went out and visited him. And, uh, he walked us through what he was doing, and, and I was impressed, I mean, they, they're taking it extremely serious, extremely. I was, uh, I know the last meeting I showed some concern about our gas stations and things, and, you know, he talked a little bit about it, but, uh, very impressed on their, way they're set up, they have their plastic glass, the, the employees are there, obviously, their business is all fifty or sixty percent, so their employees aren't really busy. So, I mean, they're, they're cleaning things and wiping down the pumps, and they have the floors marked and, uh, but just, just what seems to happen, I mean, it's, uh.
Well, and I'm sure by doing that, he's keeping his, his, his employees on the payroll.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Did you say that you were, you had contacted, uh, someone from Southeast Oil?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Be a good idea, kind, since they're our second largest, probably our largest, uh.
No, but Adam, didn't you say you talked to someone with, uh, SNS or you?
I've been visiting some of those stores.
Can, can you get up there and tell us a little bit about what you've seen? Maybe we can give you some direction as you're doing that, though.
I've been visiting a lot of our grocery stores, retail stores, gas stations, I've been trying to hit our convenience stores at peak times, you know, early in the morning, afternoon when folks get off from work, um, you know, I, I've been in several of them, they've got the tape on the floor, they have signage on the door, um, they're wiping down their countertops, I mean, most of the older SNS, now like Sunstop's or Marathon's, they're, you know, you walk in there, you can smell the bleach and the cling, clinginess, so, I mean, I think, I think the stores are doing their part, and like you said, they're open to suggestions, um, you know, um, that's what we're here for, to make suggestions, so, um, I think they're doing their part, it's just, like you say, the ten, fifteen percent that's of, um, your citizens that are not taking it as serious as others, so.
And I don't know, Mr. Harris, how hard it would be for us to maybe put together just a, a checklist, if you will, a reminder, uh, with a heading on it, things to remember, and let these guys go out and pass it out?
Yeah, I can do that, that, that won't be any problem. I, I can tell you, there's some, I think it's important that, I, I don't know if they all have signs up, but a lot of your grocery stores and Lowe's and other these large suppliers, big part of the problem is when people are lining up to check out.
That's a huge problem.
Um, it'd be great if they could get them some of those large core plast signs and put them up there where people can see them, and they're very visible, reminding people that six-foot separation. We did something a little bit childish, but I had a stick made up six foot long, painted it fluorescent yellow, and I've assigned that stick to one of my largest employees, physically largest employees, to help some of our people remember, um, what six foot looks like. Um, and there, you know, some of these goofy little things you just have to do, and it, it can go a long way, um, and some of these retail outlets as well, to have those core plast signs made up. Um, so I'm, I'm working on a list of things that we can help share with some of these managers, and I'm sure they all want to do their part, but it's difficult when you've got twenty-five or thirty or fifty employees to, um, help them remember, and sometimes you need something that's in place in front of them in their face all day long to help them.
I'm getting better at it, but I mean, I, I'm guilt, I'm guilty, very guilty of walking in and walking right up behind somebody and then looking around and everybody else is spaced out, and they turn around and look at you, and I'm back up, you know, but it, uh, it's a learning curve, so it's, it's.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, what I'm saying is, there's a lot of folks that maybe look like they're not doing it, and it's just, it just happened processed and they haven't remember, I mean, they just happen to forget for that second, and then, so.
I was in Walmart yesterday, and the cashier, uh, someone came up, uh, behind us, and I was checking out, and that, that person didn't make one step past that square or that, that sticker on the floor, and that cashier said, excuse me, could you back up to that square? And I was like.
Well, that's good that they're doing that.
I mean, hey, if we can get more people to do at least those types of things.
And that's what I want to do, I just want us as a board to encourage our community and our businesses to be mindful of that, be mindful of other, of others. Um, did, did we find out, Mr. Harris, if, in this one's, I know some of the places are doing this, but it may be mandated now that the governor's done what he's done here with the, uh, stay home, the hotels, as far as the lodging.
They're allowed to stay open, they're allowed to stay open.
I've seen that in the world.
Yeah.
For essential only. That's, that's what I was trying to say, is it just for essential employees, like, or is it still open to anyone that's coming down that road and wants to pull in here?
I'd have to go back through this thing now, 'cause I, we looked at that up yesterday, and I know it provides the exception for hotels, but I can't remember now, I'd have to go back through it, because it incorporates Miami's as well. You have to go through all of them.
I just think that's something we might need to think about. I mean, I know people need a place to stay, but I know, you know, our parks are closing, I know our local, uh, Spirit of Swanee out here, they've taken precautionary, they're, they're not renting any cabins, uh, they're not letting anyone use any public restrooms or facilities out there. Uh, at this time, if you come through, I was told it's, uh, you're self-contained in your camper. But, they're open to suggestions as well.
Let me mention something else, uh, just for those that may be watching from home, that we've had a couple of questions about this, uh, that of delivery services, trucking businesses coming in, in and out of other counties and coming in here, that is provided for in this executive order. Uh, logistics businesses, uh, trucking, delivery, uh, businesses that are moving product around, um, are allowed to do that under this executive order as well, I just wanted to comment on that.
Yes, sir. Anything else, uh, Mr. Hale?
Uh, no, just, uh, just things I was thinking of as we're going through this, I mean, I've seen in there like laundry mats or to remain open and stuff like that, I mean, whoever's managing those, I just want to make sure we get the word, whether it's through our fire department, sheriff's department, or, or Mr. Davis's department, you know, that they practice being clean as well. I mean, actually, I, I, I think we need to have a, a checklist made up and sent out to everyone. I just think it's down that we all get busy and take this thing serious for our community and for each other.
We also have, um, our fires, person, all the county buildings and stuff, our employees, um, just affect the marshes and protect these more than any other.
Right. All right, any thoughts?
I, I mean, I'm in, I'm absolutely in support of Mr. Harris, if he can do something on Letterhead and, and, uh, maybe we can get fire, fire rescue to help us distribute it or other employees that are available, give some, give them some of them to the sheriff's department, maybe they can.
The city fire department.
Yeah, so.
Yep.
We'll put something together.
Uh, just, just reminding everybody how extremely important it is, and also maybe have a contact number on there if anybody's got any questions, that there's someone they can get ahold of to answer a question if they have one. Uh, maybe put Commissioner Richardson's number on it bottom.
You pick on me a lot.
We're gonna, we're gonna find him something to do.
Either like me or hate me, one of the other.
So I'm in support of that.
Yep.
I'm in support.
Like I said, most of the people I've spoken with, and I'm, I'm sure you guys have gotten phone calls as well, they all want to do the right thing, they're just wanting to make sure that they're doing the right thing, you know, so I, I don't think anyone would be, would be offended to us making a checklist and sending it out. So. And I also, I don't know if you guys are interested in this, but I was thinking about it, what, what do we have other, I know the sheriff's department and the EOC, y'all, you guys have a Facebook page, seems to be, and, and the fire department, y'all get a lot of attention on that. Do we, this board want to entertain a Board of County Commission Facebook page?
We're, we're gonna put some informa, well.
On our webpage or something?
On our webpage, we're gonna put some information out.
Is, uh, and it works out good, is like, we just like this, uh, the different cases that come up, uh, that Kerry, um, confirmed, uh, coronavirus cases, um, we put it on Facebook, that page, and then, then Eddie will share on his page, so we're putting We put it on our Facebook, that page, and then Eddie will share on his page. So we're putting out the same information. And I would suggest that too, is that, you know, whatever information that either Eddie puts out or I put out, we all share the same information so there's no misinformation out there.
So y'all share links that goes to where people can find it?
Well, we share the page. But in that, and like I said, that's been real effective for us. You know, we've we've started the page and we've got, you know, quite a few followers now, just like the fire department does. So that's and right now, that's about the only way to really do is get the information out and as in a quick order too.
It looks like Facebook is our preferred social media outlet around here, so.
Well, especially for the maybe somewhat older as us.
Yeah, it's easy for us to navigate. Yeah.
The older folks our age, you know, in their thirties and forties and fifties are Facebook folks. The younger guys are now Snapchat and Twitter and Instagram.
Right. What is that? Is that a convenience store? What is that?
But yeah, you were asking about the links. If we share something from like the health department that has a link in it or something, it does share over to where they can follow those links. But like Sheriff said, we attempt to put out, we don't put out anything from when it, we do the same thing during the hurricanes and everything like that. The official message comes from emergency management.
Right, right.
And it's on their page and then the sheriff's office page and us, we share the emergency management in a message that way, you know, we're not putting out something that's a little bit different. Sheriff's office is putting out something that's a little bit different. Everybody's putting out the exact same information. And that way, it doesn't confuse anybody. But we haven't, a lot of the folks may see on our page, we haven't put a lot out because we're only putting out what what they're putting out to make sure that we don't put out information. And if we have something that we want to try to get out, then we get with Sharon and, you know, she'll get with Sean or whoever's doing their page and get it out from them. That way it
And with that being said, if we're gonna do this, I mean, you know, we're talking about things for the businesses and that's great, we need to do that, but you know, when you look through that thing, even you guys sharing that page, I mean, you've opened it up, you've looked at, there's so much information in there. I mean, you can just get lost in there. And, you know, maybe we can, at the same time, Mr. Harris, if we're putting a checklist together for our businesses, put something together for our community that kind of shows them what the state has expected of them with this order in place.
I'll get some of my younger employees to
Yes.
Put us something together for Facebook.
Ms. Betty, do you have something?
Please, please come to the microphone, Ms. Betty, because you can't hear for the people at home. I'm sorry.
One thing too, commissioners, while we're waiting on Ms. Betty to come up, that has worked really well and and the reason that our Facebook page was actually implemented whenever we decided to put it in place was we all know that we have the Swanee County News and Gossip site that is followed by thousands more people than what follow our page. The administrator of that page, when we started our Facebook page, we would have accidents and different things going on within the county and it would be misinformation by rumor that somebody drove by and saw something.
I see they're sharing it now.
We started putting our, the information on and the administrator has now taken anything that we share that they feel needs to get out to the community, they just share it on their page. So we're not reaching just the followers of our page and they do the same thing with the sheriff's office. You know, their site, their posts get paid, get shared just as much, so. If we do flyers that we're taking around the businesses and stuff, we can put those out on our Facebook as well and reach people that may not be coming to town, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Betty, I'm sorry for making you come up, but the people at home, they can't hear.
No, I forget that, so it's okay. I just wanted to ask you to include the library on your process for disseminating information. We also do a lot of the social media and also our site. We reach I don't want to say the number, but quite a few people in the surrounding counties and I also reach, anybody in the country and other places can come to our site and they do and we track those numbers. Not the people that's doing it, but we track the numbers and we also link to information for our patrons to be able to get the information they
Thank you so much.
If you would include us on that.
And if you could share anything that we have or that we want to put out there, because the more people we can touch, the better. Absolutely.
And also, Mr. Harris, if you need my
Younger employees? I know you're trying to find a graceful way to say that.
If you need our help in this, please let me know.
I sure will. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Betty.
Thank you, Ms. Betty.
Commissioners, on the hotel issue, because the state executive order did incorporate Miami Dade's list as well. I'll just read it to you. It says hotels, motels, other commercial lodging establishments and temporary vacation rentals are included. Are an exception in here. They are an essential business, so they're open.
But they did close down rentals, Airbnbs, rental homes, things of that.
Well, that may have followed this because this one was dated on the nineteenth. The vacation rentals, I think they later in an executive order followed up and changed.
Right.
But I haven't seen anything to the contrary on the hotels and motels. I think they're still open.
Well, I think with cases where some of the states are kind of limiting access across borders and such, that it may be necessary to have sometimes to have that, but there needs to be some best practices obviously involved in these hotels to limit the exposures, potential exposures.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamble, give us some thoughts and input. You've been mighty quiet this morning. What you thinking?
The only thing I've really made a couple of notes on is I read, and I can't find it right the second, but I read in here earlier that even the non-essential businesses that can operate, you know, outside of the, having the public come in through the internet or through telephone, that they still be allowed to operate. So when y'all are considering that list of people are non-essentials, it may be a non-essential business, but if they can shut down and operate by telephone or internet, I highly suggest to the board that we continue to let them operate.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
I think it said There's also one in I can't, I may have, I don't know if I make it up, but somewhere in here, I thought I seen something else that said about operating online.
Businesses that are able to do that.
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct. I've read the same thing you did. It's in there somewhere.
In particular, I read one that said if they have no contact with the public and they can operate with the
Well, and the reason I bring that up, I know right now there are several businesses that would probably fall under non-essential that have already shut the doors to the public and that are just strictly operating filling orders by telephone or online. And I would just hate to, I hate to see us come down so hard that we, that we prevent those from doing any more
I think that the issue really goes back to that six-foot measuring stick. That's the bottom line on this. I mean, all of this effort, all this conversation really comes back to that six-foot stick. So if, you know, the state has tried to say, okay, it's, it's non-essential because that type of business can't comply with a six-foot stick. So anything that can happen on the computer, on the telephone, placing orders, having direct shipment without handling different products, I think is great. And I think those businesses need to continue and do everything in the world that they can do without that hands-on contact. I really believe that's why this came out the way that it did.
Yeah, because I know I'm no different than any of y'all. I mean, nobody wants to see a business shut down and the hardship come on them because about every business out there is going to tell you that paycheck every Friday is pretty essential. And it, I want to put as least restrictions on them as we can. I know going forward that closures of businesses is probably going to be inevitable and I hate to see that. So I just want us to keep an open mind going forward and like, you know, the three Cs, you know.
And that's what it comes down to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We also have to keep in mind that that's, there is, I know administrator said this yesterday repeatedly on the phone. This is what this stimulus package is for, is to help these businesses to remain solvent without having, without having to come back to work or to do their normal social businesses. And these are essentially, as long as they can keep their employees until June, they're essentially grants that's non-payable or non-repayable. So I think that that information needs to get disseminated as well so that these businesses can feel comfortable, hey, let me shut the doors for a period of time until we get ahead of this thing.
The problem associated with that right now is that those agencies are just overloaded. As I get through to them, I mean, that's been going on for a week and a half. People have been complaining about that and that's going to continue to be the case unfortunately, but thankfully, there is a system there once they can begin to, because those agencies were never designed to handle
Never designed, no.
Well, it's a regional emergency. This is nationwide. I mean, they're overloaded. They're not going to be able to meet the demand once it really starts rolling in and people start laying off.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's there. It'll eventually catch up, but it's unfortunately, it's gonna take a while. You know, one thing, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, that I think we need to be sensitive of is the I don't want to see these people that have contracted this virus that are now quarantined at home treated like lepers in a leper colony. I don't know how many of these people, and I've put some thought into this and I'm going to reach out to some nonprofits. But it would be nice if there's an entity that could be a receiver of information from some of these people that are in quarantine that can't get out, maybe weren't prepared when they received this diagnosis. Maybe don't have a lot of the essentials that they need or don't have enough essentials to get them through. And maybe don't have family members or others that can help them. I'm going to try to reach out to maybe Love Inc. and some of the others in the community and see if if they're not already working on that, if we can maybe be a party to a plan to try to help communicate and disseminate information on that, try to keep these people taken care of.
And I see on Facebook, our community, just people on there putting a message out, hey, if you need some help, contact me.
That's good.
They're doing that, but I mean, it's, if someone knew where to actually go to, I think that'd be great.
Yeah. Anything else, Commissioner?
I just ask everybody to continue to pray and lift this crisis up to the one that can help us and stay calm and use common sense.
I heard a quote the other day, I can't remember, and I may, I'll be paraphrasing this, I may not get it exactly right, but someone shared with me that, a quote that we can see what the microscopic virus, the calamity that it can cause, just imagine what the faith of a mustard seed can do. The size of a mustard seed can do.
Yeah, absolutely.
The mayor, he left, I was glad, he's enjoyed him being a part of the commission, coming out to the meetings and taking some part. He sat quietly and I see the city police chief, I think this is the first time I've saw him at one of our meetings other than Ms. Ref from back there. I think it's important that we all work together. I don't, I'm not aware that the city is holding any meetings knowing what's going on in our city, county government. I ain't gonna say what I want to say, but you won't think.
Chief Davis come up here.
Yeah, I would like for you to come up to the podium if you would, with some kind of representation from the city.
Well, I don't know if all of you are aware, but the city manager is out of town and we've been trying to conduct business, basically I'm keeping him informed along with the the finance director, which is acting city manager while he's out. I've been relaying, of course, I was sitting there, wasn't paying attention to you just then. I was texting him, with him, telling him what was going on. So he is informed of what we're doing. He's on board as far as I can see with the direction the county commissioners are going. I've already set up with him to meet up with Mr. Harris and the county attorney here shortly to, let's try to figure out this business list. And the finance director just told me that she has a list of businesses in the city that renewed their permits and also we would have a list of what businesses we have that I could look at and so we could help make a better determination of the types of businesses that need to be included on a non-essential list.
That's good.
But as far as that goes, we have done some preparation for trying to get our PPE up as well. Yeah, because normally as law enforcement, we don't have the Tyvek suits and the goggles and all that stuff, so we've gotten some of that stuff in. Emergency management has done a lot to help assist us with that as well. We've been, had our, some of our local businesses contact us. You know, we know y'all hurting for gloves and stuff like that. So they have stepped up and helped first responders get some of that stuff in as well. So right now, we're in pretty decent shape.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm having things.
Commissioner Richardson.
The only thing that I, I think we've been hitting around this whole thing, I think that's probably why you wanted me to go last, is maybe take my wind out of my sails. That's okay. As you determine some of the businesses and issues that they have to deal with, a lot of your businesses are, are in fact trying their best to regulate some of these distancing issues that they have. I'd like to, instead of putting a list together of businesses, I, and let me predicate that on this statement, that if you look at what the governor says, what even the city of Miami Dade has said, and what the federal government says as a list of guidelines for these businesses, it's extremely broad. And listening to the governor yesterday, his idea was not so much on what businesses can be, what business industries or types of businesses that could be opened or closed was, it was more of their ability to maintain social distancing guidelines and there are some, there are some types of businesses that are doing a better job of this than others. And I do believe that I'd like to see us more policing the social distancing aspect of it than it is the specific type of business. We already know that, you know, we talked about this the other day, there are some businesses that cannot in any way, shape or form keep from having contact with customers, direct contact with customers. So I understand that, but then there are others that that are doing their best and as long as they, they're stepping up and saying, hey, listen, we need to keep six-foot in between people and such like that. We need to limit the amount of people in our, in our stores. To me, I would like to see us doing that type of policing rather than shutting every business down or every specific type of business down.
Well, it really isn't our option according to this executive order. I mean, now the question of policing or not policing and limiting resources that we have is something that law enforcement has to work out, but so far as those that are non-essential, I think that's going to become pretty clear and we're not going to have the ability to ignore the executive order on that.
I would say that based on the list that I've looked at, all of these lists, and I've gone through every one of them, that this is probably ninety-five, ninety to ninety-five percent of our businesses in this county are considered essential based on these lists.
Oh, I would agree. I would agree with that, but what you end up with though is a well-defined five percent. And I think that well-defined five percent or whatever that percentage happens to be, isn't optional for us to decide that they're going to close or not. I think the executive order itself speaks to that.
That's what I said. I understand that part of it. But I also want to be able to push back on some of the business owners to be able to maintain this social distancing part of it. Because that's our only, you know, we talked about this last time, that's our, that's really our only enforcement is back to business licenses at this point. They're not fining, they're not, they're not jailing, they're not doing anything like that, so it's it's not correct. jailing, they're not doing anything like that, so it's it's not correct.
That is been a choice of law enforcement to be able to do it, but the power ungranted under two fifty-two point fifty is if you ignore an order, an executive order, whether it be federal, state, local, under the Emergency Powers Act, the sheriff can arrest them, they're subject under those to two different provisions that have to do with, I think it's seven seventy-five oh eighty-three and seven fifty-five oh eighty-two. So they can be fined five hundred dollars for not complying and also be subject to sixty days in jail.
I knew that, I knew there were teeth because of the pastor down in Tampa that got arrested for not complying and was charged by the state attorney for for some of the things that he said and and did with this megachurch, but but it was communicated that that's really not what we want to see happen here. If 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 I interpreted.
There's an exception for churches in here. I mean, they're allowed as an essential business in here.
As long as they maintain the ten, no groups more than ten, ten people and that's listed in there.
Personally, I think that, I mean, this is my opinion, is that while they are essential, that everyone's better served if they can perform their services online.
I think for the most part, they've done that. They've they've got creative with the way they've gathered, if they have gathered, and it's been just a few people. I mean, it's a but those those people are the ones that that think clearly every day. I mean, really, the few we're dealing with is probably not going to church every week is kind of some of the problem we got.
Mr. Chairman, we need to go to work. Man, we, I've got so much to do here. Now, I'm I'm going to ask that y'all not make our list any longer than it is right now. We're loaded up.
The only other thing, Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I would consider is Mr. Han mentioned earlier about a capacity, you know, type thing. That would also help with some of the social distancing within some of the larger buildings and stores or whatever. With the kind of capacity rule in there, he suggested looking at, well, that's what I happen to know is you can have in a building, one person per thousand square feet at a time to be able to get in and out, you know. So if you've got like a Jiffy store that's on the corner and it's got fifteen hundred square feet in the, you know, the building itself, who only took the two customers who are both be allowed to go into the store, you know, at a time. A person and a percentage of person, a person and a half, something like that, but you know, that would be something that I would like to have some guidance on. You can put more restrictions than what it says, not going the type of business that would be closed or whatever, but those are the types of things that you can look at. Also wanted to, one of the definitions that they have in there is with regard to public space. Public space, people usually want to say that it is, if it's owned by a governmental entity or, you know, related, it is a public space. We suggested that restriction is narrower than that and I suggested it for government office to readdress part of that. But again, I want you to be aware about how we're going to be looking at it from that standpoint. One of the things we've addressed in communication with the government offices is trying to figure out what business actually means under all of these things. What I suggested to them was to look at the NAICS directory, this was kept by the Department of Revenue, just like you were talking about with the city, when you have a business licensing going all the way across there. If you have a business, you have to have this type of indexing from the state. And it'd be easy for the state to go down and say, okay, this type of business, if you're, you know, category, it's a six-digit code, but if you're this category, then you can only work from home. If you're this category, you have to be closed. And you can go through it very quickly and we're hoping to be able to address that in short order to be able to clarify some of these questions for businesses in that fashion.
But at this time, we're not, aren't we just doing a recommendation about that we'd like you to police yourself? We're not, we're not really going to.
That's what I would suggest.
I mean, I I want to give them the opportunity to try to do the right thing theirself and look after theirself. I'm I'm really not up to, you know.
Some businesses, no matter what, I mean, when we go and look at this list, there are businesses that are going to have to be closed.
It it isn't optional.
I'm not saying.
I think he's talking about the number of people.
I'm talking about the number of people in an establishment at one time.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's, I just, I would like to give them the opportunity to start with to, you know.
I agree with that.
Then if they if they choose not to do it and we have to revisit it, I mean, it's it's really going to be up to the sheriff or the police department to kind of help us. And and there again, I want to be very clear, I'm not interested interested in arresting anybody or fining anybody. We're in a bad situation here. We're a small community. We all need to come together and and make good decisions. I mean, at the end of the day, even with the order that has to do with essential or nonessential businesses, basically, it has to do with honor system. Are you going to do what's right for your community? That that's, nobody is going to go out there and hold a gun and put handcuffs on you and take you to jail. We're asking the people to step up and do the right thing, and that is if it's something that is a possibility of spreading and you're can't get that distance, then obviously it's an issue. The numbers are going up. We see them every day on on the cases we have here. But it's just good common sense and judgment is what we got to have in a time like this and and we all have to come together and and it's not just up to a law enforcement, I see either. It's up to all of us. I mean, we all got to.
We all have to be mindful.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
It, and and we have to help spread the word, just like with those those guys. I mean, they're nobody wants to be a bad guy here. All we want to do is get through this thing and we will get through it. We will definitely get through it. I mean, it's going to take time. It's a process that has to happen. And there is light at the end of the tunnel. It's a I know it's it's depressing and sad and nobody has an answer and everybody wants an answer. But somebody asked me yesterday, what you going to do? I mean, what what are you really going to do? I tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to get up every morning, put my boots on, go to work and do my best to take care of my family and this community. That's what I'm going to do. And at the end of the day, if we all do that, and I understand we can't all go to work together, when I say work, I mean work towards helping this community get
Supporting one another.
Of what we're dealing with here. That's what I mean by that. So it's doom and gloom. I understand that, but there's a person upstairs here that can help us out and he's looking over us. But he expects us to use good common sense in the process. If I don't have anything else, all I need.
Yes, sir.
Before you close, I I recognize the mayor had stepped out and he he came back in and Chief Davis spoke. And I said, we didn't have anyone from the city side. Thank you for your coming.
Thank you for watching, Mr. Chairman.
Come to the microphone real quick, actually, since you've come back in. I I do appreciate you being here and we're getting finished up here, but speaking of the man upstairs, why don't you give us a closing prayer today?
That'd be great. I like that.
I'll do that. Thank you. And I'm just here listening and learning and here to let you know, appreciate what you're trying to do your efforts and all of our first responders and sheriff, the chief and all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. We'll pray. Father, we love you today and we thank you for your goodness and your mercies upon us. We thank you for this community, our county, our our state. We thank you for this great United States of America. We're so blessed to live here and we're grateful for your providence and care for us. We come today especially with heavy hearts because of this pandemic that has not only come to our shores, but has affected many people throughout the world. We pray in your name that this thing would cease and desist. We pray, Father, that your hand would be upon those that are sick and suffering, that they would recover speedily. We pray this thing would desist speedily, Lord, and and that we would be restored to our prosperous and great and strong and free country. Thank you for guiding and directing our leadership during this time from the president all the way down to our local officials. Keep your hand upon them and their families. Keep them safe. Give us, Lord, I pray, wisdom. And we pray for our first responders, our police, our health officials and all of those that are on the front lines of this war. We pray your hand upon them to keep them safe, Father, to keep their families safe during this time. And we just, we thank you that our community here is strong and that we have good people that care about one another. Let us show and exhibit the love of God during this time and to reach out and to help our neighbors. Thank you again for all your goodness toward us. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. I would like to say before we close real quick, we had some bad weather the other day coming through and tornadoes, I guess, and things have all, I visited out there yesterday to some where that happened. I appreciate the county, all their efforts on helping getting cleaned up. Those are just terrible. It affected, you know, some houses and also some chicken houses, but just our thoughts and prayers from the board goes out to all those folks and residents and anything we can do in any way to help them. That's that's what we're here for and with that, if I just have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a quick comment?
Yeah, me too.
I promise to keep it brief. I just wanted to say, I know that Sharon isn't here from the UOC right now, but I I'm telling you, she's been pushing information out on a regular basis. It's been very helpful. I'm grateful for the service that they provide over there. I just wanted.
And and to add that, they are helping our local health providers as well. I can speak firsthand from that. My wife, being a nurse, she has been more than helpful in getting them the things they need to take care of our community. And and the mayor said it in his in his prayer, and I just want to remind everybody, we're not a county and we're not a city. We're a community and we're going to get through this together.
Absolutely.
So, thank you guys.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Have one.
Motion by Commissioner Fleming.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill. All in favor, aye.